We need every minute.
The Tuesday, February 27, 2018, work session, meeting of Portsmouth City Council, the order. Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simms?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Mayor Rowe?
Here. We're going to start with item two and make Billy your report the last. And so with that...
Thank you, Mayor.
...the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I'm pleased to introduce and welcome Ms. Anne Seward, who is serving as our interim Chief Financial Officer for the City of Portsmouth. Ms. Seward has over 28 years of experience in local government, concentrated in managing and financial improvement of localities. Mrs. Seward's professional background includes serving as Chief Financial Officer for the City of Suffolk, Assistant County Administrator and Director of Budget and Finance for Olive White County, and former County Administrator of Olive White. Mrs. Seward is known for her expertise in all aspects of governmental finance. Currently, we are advertising nationally and regionally for a new CFO, and it is my goal to make an appointment by May 1st. Our presentations today...
Please stand up.
Oh, excuse me.
So we can see.
Right. Good to be with you all.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Yes. Thanks, Mrs. Seward. I'm sorry, I was just going right on. As you're aware, we are in the midst of the FY 2019 budget process. On January 22nd, I presented the strategic budget initiatives. We have hosted the community engagement session on February 1st, completed departmental budget hearings, engaged organizations and agencies in the submission of their requests, and meeting regularly with the Superintendent of Portsmouth Public Schools. We've also completed our budget survey that was online for a month and a week. The public work session going forward presentations will be on the FY 2019 budget-focused topics. Tonight, the first presentation is the FY 2019 Proposed Community Block Grant and Home Program Budget, presented by Mr. Bob Baldwin, Planning Director. The funding source for these programs come through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, better known as HUD. The city has not received the FY funding allocation confirmation. Therefore, the budget amounts in this presentation reflect the FY 2018 allocation from HUD. The second presentation is a follow-up from the February 13th public work session where staff was requested to analyze the impact of a $900 annual COLA increase for retirees. Tonight, Mrs. Elizabeth Gooden, Director of Human Resource Management, and Mrs. Anne Seward, interim Chief Financial Officer, will present background information on the retirement systems and the financial impact to the retirement system as it relates to COLA increase. We also have present tonight Mr. Andre Stewart, who is the Managing Consultant Actuary Director with John Hancock. John Hancock is the city's retirement advisors, and this company serves over 57,000 plans, helping over 2.7 million participants. John Hancock administers the city's fire and police retirement systems and the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System. As city manager, whenever there is a discussion of retirement, I make sure the city's retirement advisors are part of the discussion. We will begin, and the last presentation this evening will be the Annual Reassessment Report, presented by the city's assistant, Mr. Holt Butt. We'll begin with Mrs. Gooden. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Bob Baldwin. Okay, it's in my mind, the scheduling, we flipped it. Mr. Baldwin, thank you.
She's more than welcome to do my presentation.
Thank you.
And good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Simms, and members of City Council. Just mentioning with me tonight is Jeff Kramer. I think most of you know Jeffy, he's our program manager, so hopefully between the two of us, we can answer any questions you might have regarding the FY 19 Community Block Grant program budgeting. As Dr. Pat mentioned, these programs are funded by HUD, and we have not received official confirmation, so for budgeting purposes to move forward, we're using the current year allocation. We have not heard anything to indicate we would not get something similar for next year, so we're using that as our working dollar amount. Obviously, if there's some significant change in the funding program from HUD, we would advise you and let you know about that. One last thing, I think you're aware, we work off a five-year consolidated plan. This is year five, so you have a five-year plan you put together, then implement over a series of annual action plans, so we've been doing this. And this year is really continuing that process of what we started with the five-year plan just four years ago. So we'll take a look at our CDBG entitlement funding. You should see the current year funding, we had $1.399 million, and so again, for the FY 19, we're just going to use that as our planning target. We have regular program income, that's some rental money that comes into the program through PRHA for some longstanding arrangements, so that's sort of an annual fund that goes into our program income. This year, you know, we had some projects such as the Wendy's, where there was some real estate sales. That money shows up in your unprogrammed funds, that money's come in, so we put it into the budget cycle this year to program, since it's obviously unprogrammed when the funds come into cycle background through HUD and come back into us. So going forward for FY 19, we're projecting a total revenue of just over $2 million, 2.187 million, for this FY 19 budget year. We just note at the bottom of the page there, we've also evened out the request to match up with the available funding amount. One of the first categories funded under our CDBG program is our public services. There is a mandatory cap, you cannot exceed 15% of your annual allocation in that. If you look at the, point the two columns, you have current year funding, and then we have a requested funding. You'll see a lot of times the requested funding is above current year funding, and as you follow that down to the bottom of the page, you'll see the requested funding is 291, 477. We only have $209,000 to allocate. What we've done is we've held everybody with basically current funding, what they got this year. We continued for next year, we didn't show any major increases. A couple changes we'll point out in here, the park intake services, they were funded at $48,000 in the current year. They have split that service with this four-kids intake service. The four kids is kind of a regional component, the park is more local, so it's basically the same amount of money, but this time it's split between the four-kids program and the park program. One thing we have new in here is the Eggleston Homeless Employment Service, and that's a program, a new one we'll start funding, relatively small amount, but try to assist homeless citizens to get some basic assistance in trying to get back into the employment market, so we're trying to assist in that. So that's the one new category. There was some PRHA family self-sufficiency, and this is where that funding is coming from, it was in the current year plan. We have not received any requests for reimbursement from PRHA this year, and they did not request any funding for the program next year, so we've reprogrammed that to this Eggleston program. So again, holding our budget flat there. Let's see if I can change. On the CDBG Admin and Planning, that's basically the program management that runs through the city. Again, we have a slight increase in the funding amount matching up with the allocation, and that basically is anything we need, whether it's consultant assistance to run the program, advertising, we run the fair housing program, so that's our administrative costs for the city to do that. And there's this, one other thing we'll mention, the Continuum of Care Grant, that's been funded at a relatively low level for prior years. This year it was at $13,000. They requested $33,000 in our conversations with the city manager. She's indicated a preference to allow Doug Weller, the city's grants manager, to provide that service for them, instead of paying for an additional service, that we would provide that service from the City of Portsmouth staff. So that's why that one shows a proposed funding from that at zero. This is probably the sheet people are most interested in looking at, how we propose to allocate the bulk of the funding. It's just a little over 900, about $955,000. I'll mention, we have prepared this budget continuing the direction from council over the past couple of years, with our primary funding being directed towards the sportsplex. So you'll see in there an additional $955,000. I'm not sure when the last time you've had an update, kind of bring you along speed of where we are with the sportsplex. We're just about at the point of going in, working through the city engineer and the Parks and Rec Department of getting their parking lot constructed that'll service the gym facility and the football fields, and to be honest, their parking to meet all their zoning requirements is in final site plan. This will renovate the first of the two football fields out there, this will put in, there's a walking path that goes around out there, this will include the walking path and stormwater management. Anything else would come along with building all those things, those are in process. The money we're requesting this year, we go in, would finish the second ball field, any potential cost overruns we would have out there, and so that takes us to a proposed funding this year. And that, at this point, could take the sportsplex up to having both football fields done, the parking lot, the gym, landscaping, stormwater management. One thing we would note, there's been some discussion, you know, of demolishing buildings out at the sportsplex, including the building that sits by the small swimming pool out there. We basically have some money indicated in here to provide a bathroom facility. Should the city want to keep the small pool out there before it builds a larger pool, I believe it could build a small bathroom that would serve the existing pool, so it could continue to keep that pool open, should you so desire, with building just a, you know, a small bathroom facility to serve that. So we've provided for that, should council want to keep the pool open, trying to provide an alternative to that large building that's there today.
What's the total expenditure out there thus far?
For the rehabbing of the sports complex?
Everything, rehabbing, demolition?
Mr. Right, would you have a rough estimate of what has been expended thus far?
I have to comment.
All right, we'll get that back to you, Mr., and we'll send it to you tomorrow.
And so again, we go down through here, you can pretty much see a lot of the programs being funded. Couple of changes in here, we have a minor housing rehab put in there. We've had an occasion where people need emergency, people low, moderate income, need some emergency repairs, don't have a funding source. In the past years, through PRHA, there's been a program such as this, they no longer provide that service, so we're proposing to allocate some funding for that. This Eggleston Site Improvements, that's another facility, it's a laundry facility that was, has been taken over by Eggleston, had laundry equipment provided in there by CDBG funds in prior years. They're going to get the facility up and running, they need some parking lots, some other minor improvements for that facility. And we listed this category under Recreation Site Improvements. You know, there was a, through our CDBG program, we funded an assessment of all the city's parks and rec facilities, and took a look at what needed to kind of bring all those up to speed. We proposed allocating some funding in there for CDBG-eligible renovations to some of those facilities where they meet the low and moderate income requirement. So we know, over time, you had a lot of capital budget needs for a lot of these parks and rec facilities. We're just proposing to allocate some CDBG funds to do exactly that thing where they are eligible, that's that $530,000. And you can see the requested funding, that's sort of the total we were working from in there. One last thing we'll mention, we did have a request from PRHA for Lincoln Park Phase One for utility work out there. There's also been a multi-year request from PRHA, they also had indicated to us they were going to apply through the city CIP program for that as well. I think there's some question how far that has gotten along, but our position on putting together our CDBG budgets, the council was still working to finish sportsplex, and so from at least our budget we put together here, we've continued with that, trying to get the sportsplex done, rather than leaving things partially finished, and we shift, you know, the bulk of our funding over to Lincoln Park for infrastructure. Our take is that's really more of a CIP type of a question than a CDBG. Years past, when the CDBG budget was much larger, used to fund a lot of things this way, but as our allocation continues to be relatively small, that's just a very large chunk of money for the CDBG program to pay for a large project over multiple years. So we did not show any funding in for that.
Before we go to home, let's see if we have any questions on there. Any questions, Elizabeth?
Is the Eggleston Site Improvement, the laundry, is that the one in Portsmouth?
Yes.
That used to have another name?
Yeah, I can't remember the, it is. It's a, Mr. Kramer?
Chesapeake Services.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, so it is. So we've, you know, used CDBG funding to put the equipment, the equipment's still in the building.
Yes.
We didn't lose the equipment.
Other questions?
Yes, the PRHA Lincoln Park Phase One, this 831, is that all under, I mean, this is just for you, does PRHA have a separate line item that they're requesting all that comes in?
No, they're just another sub-recipient of city funding through the city council, so the city council wanted to allocate, that'd be council's determination to go that way.
And the, if the city, you said if the city decides to put in another pool, while that one is being there, you're going to put in a bathroom, but is the funding for the new pool allocated?
Well, I think that what we'd be looking for, if we do the next five-year plan, if you want to continue working out the sportsplex, we'd write that into the plan, and it all depends on how expensive the pool gets, whether or not, again, just like in this case, if you end up building a very expensive pool, you have to look at the impact on other CDBG opportunities. If it's something reasonable, it's certainly part of that sportsplex out there that could be justified for funding. And that's a question really that would become up in next year's five-year plan.
We're completing.
Other questions? On the housing rehab?
Yes.
Yes.
This is not meant to be negative, because I support the program, but does the municipal corporation, the city, have the statutory authority to do that?
As far as funding?
As far as doing it, I mean, are we going to administer the program?
Yes.
Then my question is, do we have the statutory authority? You might want to research that.
We'll take a look at it and just confirm or clarify.
Okay. We'll definitely take a look at that, verify.
And report back.
It's definitely a needed, it's definitely a needed program, even if we have to find a third-party provider.
I guess the...
That's why you have a housing authority, too.
That's what I was getting ready to say, the team, and Mr. Kramer is the one who monitors this daily, and is really knowledgeable, is the one who called to our attention that this was under PRHA for many years, and that there has been significant impact through our citizens using those funds when it was there. So he was a strong recommender that we would have a gap, particularly in our elderly who may need something done, if in fact that was not considered. We could go back, Mayor, if council desires, and I can revisit this with Mr. Plan.
I think that's a good...
And get a position from why they are not, or whatever.
Yeah.
If that's the case, I will do that and report it back.
My concern is not only the state code, but the Constitution and the credit clause.
Right.
Very good.
At least here.
I shall.
And we're certainly early enough in the process here, we have plenty of time to answer any questions like that.
Okay, other questions? Let's go to home.
Okay, go to the home program. Home program, much smaller pot of money, about $340,000 is our allocation. We note a couple things, there's some program income we're identifying there, that's from some longstanding loans that had been out by PRHA for a number of years, and the loans have been paid off, and the funding has returned back into the, or the properties were sold, one or the other. And so we see a fairly significant number in the current year. The FY 19 number, the 5850, that's actually already received. We know, we never project what we might get, this is a, you know, as it comes in, it comes in, we just tabulate it, come back to council for reprogramming once it comes in. So that gives you our total revenue at 346, with a total request of 463.
You know, speaking of property sales, Mayor, by PRHA, I think it'd be a good idea to get a listing of recent property sales, maybe in the last couple of years, properties sold, and what the assessment, or the...
An assessed value?
Assessment was.
Fair market value?
Yeah, fair market value, thinking about. Yeah, be a good idea to look at that.
All right, we have it noted.
I can get you that information. I can get you all that information.
Yeah.
Okay, how many years back can you?
Whatever you want me to.
Three?
Two, three?
Yeah, three would be fine.
Three years.
Okay. There you go. Okay. First item up there is the tenant-based rent assistance, and this is really a program to help someone to keep from becoming homeless, who might need a little bit of assistance with their rent. This is a program that's administered through Park, and so you'll see the first two categories is the amount of money being allocated to the program and the administration fee for Park to operate it. You're mentioning the HRPDC, you know, they do our down payment closing cost assistance program. You've noticed we have a proposed funding that's dropped from current year, and the main reason, they still have money in the available that's from current year that hasn't been expended, it's been a pretty successful program. I believe we've had maybe 30 different homeowners get assistance in this, from this program through the PDC. So the expectation is they won't need as much funding to go through the next fiscal year, so we've just shown that as a little bit lower based on the fact they've already got available funds. And then we do have a mandatory requirement for the community housing development, or is it the CHODO? We must do a set aside, and so we're doing our mandatory set aside for the CHODO piece, and that's pretty much the total home program budget. Going forward, and again, I've mentioned before, you know, we're very early in the process this year, plenty of time, if council wanted to, you know, tweak this in some fashion, we would be lining up with the city's regular budget schedule, so there'll be public hearings in April, with an adoption of the action plan in May. That gets submitted to HUD after that is done, and our new program here starts in July, and there's usually a little delay before the funds are actually available from July, but that's the project schedule from this point forward.
Questions? Any guidance that council wants to give to the city manager or team? Everybody's comfortable with it?
All right, thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Mrs. Gooden? Mr.?
John Hancock, representative, participate?
If there are any questions.
Do you want me to stand up and then do some more?
Yes. Mr. Stewart, if you would stand, I'll introduce you again. Mr. Stewart comes to us from John Hancock, and he is actually an actuarial that has worked with our city's finance department and with our retirement board as it relates to the three systems which I've spoken to you about, fire, police, and the Portsmouth Supplemental System.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Now, you administer the plan, but you also serve as the investment advisor?
We do not. We serve as the plan administrator, the record keeper, as well as the actuary.
And I wanted everybody to hear that.
Mm-hmm. She got it.
Good point.
There we go.
All right.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. Tonight, this presentation is going to provide you a quick overview of the city's retirement systems to include the financial impact of the COLAs.
Thank you.
Currently, as you know, the city has two closed retirement systems, the Fire and Police Retirement System, which was limited to employees of sworn firefighters and police officers hired before 1995. I think what most people remember about our Fire and Police Retirement System is that 3-2-1. It was a very lucrative, rich benefit, and subsequently, about a year after the 3-2-1 was actually introduced, it was closed. Our Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System, that's for our general employees, they were hired prior, those hired prior to December of 1984. When they were closed in 1984, general employees had the opportunity, we started participating with the Virginia Retirement System, and in 1995, Fire and Police were participating in the Virginia Retirement System also, under the LEO benefits.
How many active employees roughly are in there now?
Currently now, in the Fire and Police Retirement System is 20, and in the PRS it is 18 as of January of 2018. The retirement calculations, as you see, Fire and Police, they were based, both of them are based on the years of credible service. The one with Fire and Police, I know most of you are pretty familiar, the 3-2-1, the first three years, they got 3%, the next five years, 2%, and one year thereafter. What makes that benefit very lucrative is also the fact that over time, supplemental pays were also included. And as with most retirement systems, you know, it takes five years to vest, but another benefit of the 3-2-1 system was, you could retire at the age of 50 with five years of service, or 20 years at any age. And keep in mind, we had a lot of our Fire and Police, they tend to start young. Portsmouth Supplemental, again, it's not as lucrative, but they actually get 2%, 2% for each year, and basically, they can retire at 50, age 50, with at least five years of credible service. The retirement assumptions, for the financial impact that Ms. Seward is getting ready to present, want to make sure that everyone realizes that for this purpose of the retirement assumptions, it actually includes our service retirees, those retirees who actually retired on disability, and it's going to include any beneficiaries of the retirement systems. And with that, Ms. Seward?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The next two slides that I'll review with you are going to address, let's see here, nope, which way do I go? Yep, they're going to address the impact of the pension increase of $75 per month, or $900 a year, for both of the Fire and Police, as well as the Portsmouth Supplemental. On the left-hand side, what we've broken out are the current contributions that you contribute from the general fund on an annual basis. Currently, it's about $6.5 million for the Fire and Police, about 1.8 million for the Supplemental System. Should you move forward with this pension increase, that would be an increase for the Fire and Police of about $550,000, or $265,000 for the Portsmouth Supplemental, and the projected impact on the general fund would go up by $815,000 a year, roughly one cent on your real estate tax, that's what that equates to. That would make your total general fund contribution each year roughly $9 million. This amount is not inclusive of about $11 million in debt service that you also pay each year, due to some bonds that you issued back in 2013. As I understand it from reading some of the history, the fund was funded at about 28% and we'll talk in the next slide about what the governor is for a healthy fund, and so in 2013, the city did issue some debt to make sure that you got yourself to that healthy level. But mentioning here, so the total amount that's going into this fund each year is about $20 million from the city for the current fiscal year, and that's addressing about 1,010 members that you have in that system.
Say that again, the number?
$20 million, $20 million.
And how many members?
1,010 members. And that would actually be about 28 cent on your real estate tax rate of what your currently, what your rate is currently. So on the next slide, what we show you here is the funding ratio. When we talk about funding ratio, what we're talking about is the percentage of funding that you've set aside to meet the obligation that the city has in the overall pension plan system. And the governor here is your credit rating agencies, they take a look at this each year. It's actually required that we report this in your annual CAFR, so in the appendix in the back, we actually calculate this on an annual basis. And as I mentioned back in 2013, you issued those bonds because you were at about 28%, which is extremely low, very unhealthy. In issuing that debt, it got you up to the 80% level just four years ago. So what we're showing you here are the funding ratios that exist today, and so in just four years' time, we have dropped from the 80% level down to, on the left for Fire and Police, 72.4% of your funding ratio. So you're going back down again. On the right, we show you in the blue, you are at 75.9% for the Supplemental. Should you make this change, it takes you even further in the wrong direction. It would bring you to a 70.6% for Fire and Police, and 73.3% for the Supplemental. When we aggregate all that together, it would take you from a citywide 73% down to 71%. And again, remember, that governor is about 80%, so you're really going the wrong way with this. We have, as we said, the representative here, if you have any detailed questions of staff, we'll be happy to answer those.
Okay, questions?
I guess just one question I have is, you said it dropped from about 80% to 72.4 in what, over the last four years?
Yes.
Was that based on, you know, the number of retirees that retired in the last four years that are drawing now as opposed to it being funded?
And this is where we might call our representative up to speak to, there are a number of factors that go into that percentage, and it really changes every year, it's based on your investment earnings and a number of things, but...
Mr. Stewart?
Good evening. Good evening. Yes, there are a number of factors. One is that this calculation is based on what we call an actuarial value of assets as opposed to the market value of assets. The market value of assets is what you would see if you were to open up your trust report. The actuarial value of assets is more, you could be thought of as a five-year average of all the past market values. So when we did this calculation back in 2013, targeting 80%, we had an idea that in 2014, 2015, that value would drop just based on where that average was moving. At that time, the average was above the market value, and as time goes, that average is expected to converge towards the market value. So that was one factor, and probably the most significant factor. And then, we're always going to have actuarial gains or losses, meaning the expectations or assumptions that we set are never going to exactly meet the actual experience of the plan. So if participants retire sooner than we anticipate and start drawing benefits earlier, that's going to increase the liabilities of the plan, and that's also taking place. And thirdly, the increase in the longevity of participants. The Society of Actuaries, every year or every few years, will review longevity experience, how long we anticipate the general population as well as pensioners who live. That has been increasing, so our mortality assumptions have changed. And as people live longer, they are expected to receive benefits for a longer period of time, therefore, the liabilities increase. So it's been, those are probably the three primary factors. Also, investment return has a lot to do with that. If our investment assumption of 7.25% is not met, then the funded status would also decrease for that reason.
Now, has the number of participants changed in, let's say, the last five years? Do we have that figure?
I don't have that in front of me, but I will say it's not significant. We don't have participants coming into the plan, and it's only through deaths that the number of participants would change.
That's where I was getting at.
I don't know, we would have to get that. We would have to get that information.
Yeah, no new enrollments, and unfortunately, people die, that number should be decreasing. Be good to know what it's been averaging, say, in the last five, five years.
We'll get that forward. We'll get that forward.
Other questions?
Yes, I guess Ms. Stewart mentioned that there was 1,110, and then Ms. Gooden mentioned that there were 18 and 21, so I'm just trying to figure out.
They're still working.
Active, active.
Yeah. That all goes into the calculus?
That's correct, yes. The active participation doesn't have a significant impact on these numbers because it's so small, obviously.
Ms. Smith?
I just want to recap, I want to say this out loud, make sure I got the big picture here. The big picture for the new request is to give 1,010 members $75 a month.
Which is 900.
Cost $815,000 over and above our already predicted expenses.
Yes, and it also adds to the two areas of which, going forward, every year
Perpetuity.
There would be an increase.
Gotcha.
Although it's 800 now, but it would increase.
Right, because it'll compound on itself.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's a moving target, just like you said, because longevity increases.
You could say that. So, based on our assumptions today, if our assumptions are met, it's going to be $815,000 every year for the next 18 years.
18 years.
If our assumptions are not met, and things end up being favorable to the city, that $815,000 would be lower. If they're not favorable to the city, then we'd have a higher contribution on an annual basis.
I guess where we got to this point was, and I think some of our council remember that, at one time, we had, we established a COLA policy, verbal policy attached, it wasn't legislative action. But that policy was to actually keep from this type of thing where our retirees had to come and speak before council and wage a campaign, if you may, to get a stipend. And that policy was 50% of what the general wage employees got. And that was established, gee, probably about 15 years ago when it worked. We weren't into these situations. So we can't settle that tonight, but perhaps council can put some thought to that in the future, and hopefully in the near future. Any other comments or questions? Dr. Pat?
Thank you, all. Thank you for doing that. Very helpful. Thank you, thank you, council. With that said, we will move forward to our city assessor.
Let's do, we'll make that the very last thing.
Oh, okay, you won't, that's right, Mayor.
Let's go to your report, review, report max.
Okay. I'll start before, before I do the report backs, Mayor, I'll go on and do the four city manager report items. Council, before you, tonight, you have four items that will come for you for your consideration. The first is a grant for the adoption of, a grant of $10,650 from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles and appropriating that said fund to the FY 2018 Grant Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department for the purchase of speed equipment devices like radars that they can use during checkpoints and saturated patrols throughout the city. The second and the third are two reappropriations from Portsmouth Public Schools. The first is a reappropriation of CIP funds for Woodrow Wilson High School restroom renovations, and it's adoption of an ordinance amending the education category of the FY 2018 Capital Improvement Fund budget to establish the Woodrow Wilson High School restroom renovation project to transfer $240,000 to said project from the IRC data center project. During the design phase of the IRC data center project, it was determined that significant electrical upgrades would be required prior to, and in addition to the planned upgrades for the center. And the project was temporarily placed on hold and will be considered for inclusion in future CIP programs. So this is how this money is generated to be re-appropriate. The second is a transfer of funds within the Portsmouth Public Schools budget from the Portsmouth Public School budget to the CIP, and it's adoption of an ordinance authorizing the amendment of an overall and third quarter FY 2018 Portsmouth Public Schools General Fund operating budget and FY 2018 City of Portsmouth Capital Improvement Fund budget by authorizing the transfer of $520,000 between classifications in the Portsmouth Public School General Fund budgets and by further authorizing the transfer of the $636,000 from the PPS General Fund budgets to the Woodrow Wilson High School restroom renovation project in the education category of the FY 2018 Capital Improvement Fund. And the transfer of these funds will come from the administrative, administration attendance and health categories, and it will be transferred into the public education line item and the operation and maintenance line item. And PPS has also identified the need to repurpose school operational funding of $636,000 to the city's capital improvement fund, as I indicated, that they were abandoning the project right now for the DAC Center because of the additional costs that are not funded for the electrical work that would need to be done. And the fourth and final is adoption of an ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter Two of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, 2006 by deleting Article, what did I say, Article 20, the Crane Island Study Commission in the entirety, as shown in Exhibit A, of which during the retreat you all discussed and eliminated. And there's one more that's going to come forward in next, next month's public work session.
Any questions on this?
All right. With that said, you have in front of you, members of council, some report backs. You have the report backs from the February 12th meeting, you have report backs from the February 13th meeting. And in the layout for the February 12th, there was question survey, Virginia Cities and Hampton Road Schools for Career and Technical Education CTE Programs to Determine Success Rate Best Practices. We have information, support information behind this particular report back that provides you with that information. It also lays out the courses that are offered in other city localities under their CTE programs. And it also has a piece in here where you talked, you asked a question about increasing the gas, could we increase the gas fund, and that, we've got an article in here that speaks to that. The next, on the 13th, the first item, the Second Quarter Financial Report, that data is being collected, and it will be coming back in a report back, and we should have that ready for you before the week is over to get it out to you. And in talking with Dr. Bracy in regard to, and this was Mr. Moody's request, Regional Culinary Arts Program, he has indicated to me that he would be getting that information back to me, so soon as I get it, I will get it back to you. I can answer that there is a very vibrant hospitality program for Portsmouth Public School, high school students, and they are a part of and participating at the Renaissance Hotel. So that, and in fact, Mrs. Simmons and I were walking out after the EDA retreat, and the CTE teacher saw us as we were going out, and she just raved over how well the students were doing there and how well received they are even under new management. So they have a very viable program. And students are being hired once completing that program by hotels around the region. Okay? You also have in there an update, and I know this is the most important update, on the Frederick Boulevard road work. V-Doc crews are starting to rebuild the South Van Lane on Frederick Boulevard, including the intersection. City staff is reviewing inspection video for utilities and storm drain pipes, and V-Doc anticipates that the intersection will open by mid-March and the completion of all of the work by May 14. That concludes my report back.
Question? This brings us to...
Oh, wait.
Come on.
You know I can't hear anything. Were you asking for liaison reports?
About to.
Okay, sorry.
Liaison reports. Start with the vice mayor.
Thank you. I was just going to remind us and the public that we have a joint meeting with the EDA this Saturday.
Next Saturday.
Oh, was it next Saturday? Yeah.
Let me jump across the table.
Sorry, pardon me, Deborah. And the EDA did have, and it's here at City Hall, in this room. And the EDA did have their commission retreat this past week, week last rally, and I think that was well received, and Dr. Patton and I, well, and a lot of city staff participated in different parts of it all day, and I think it was very well done. And the Renaissance did a super job of providing packed lunches and a nice room, and it was a good day.
Okay. We'll go with you.
Okay, listen, PRAHA report we presented last time, the sheets were broken down into the three sheets, what they would keep, what the city, they would like the city, and what they proposed for auction. But at the last meeting, two weeks ago, they did mention that this property that we have at County in Effingham, if that's not something that is approved through a vote, that was definitely one that they wanted us to put on the table to take so that we could have control of that. Also, they have a new developer who has come in for the Effingham Plaza apartment, housing development. They're going to have a developer to come in and do some major renovations, some landscaping, and kind of do some new life to the property. The residents there are really excited about it, and so, something great for Portsmouth.
Thank you. Nate, regional jail?
Well, first, I'll do parking authority. Parking authority, met last week. Also, it was the first meeting for Mr. Darius Gavin. He attended a meeting with us at night. Proposed, some things to discuss were proposed parking rate be a dollar and 25 cent minimum with a $12 maximum for the day, $2 flat rate for nights and weekends, proposed for no parking, and overtime violation be a rate of $35. Vis, the collection rate on parking is 92%. They're in process, they're going to review all the leases for all the garages within the city, and working on the plans for the new county street garage. We'll have meetings with the stakeholders as the project progresses. Okay, next one is the Hampton Road Regional Jail Board Authority. We met on the 21st, this past Wednesday. At the time I presented a letter, there was a letter that was sent to our mayor, Roe, from numerous inmates with some concerns and complaints about being in the regional jail. So that was forwarded to Dr. Patton, the city manager, and I received a copy, being that I'm on the board. We took that and presented that information to the regional jail board authority, and from that, it was, decision was made by the board that there was going to be an internal investigation that was going to be completed based on the letter received to us. So I'll update that in the future. They currently have 36 vacancies. They are, you know, they are recruiting just like everybody else, and, you know, issue with a lot of public safety corrections and police, just don't have the job pool out there anymore, so they are working to fill those vacancies. In 2017, they had 330 trips to the ER. I don't have the exact number, some of those were done by fire and EMS with ambulance, some were transported by the officers there. Out of those 330 trips, 180, 108, excuse me, were admitted. In addition to that, their transportation, they had over 800 off-site doctor visits with specialists, and that's something that their officers have to do transports, use minimum of two to transport somebody to these visits, and that, you know, cuts down the number of people in the facility during the day. There has been some current concerns, we're looking at the new budget, the, basically what they're suggesting they're going to do for the fiscal year 2019, starting in July, they're going to increase the per diem by $4. What that would do to us is $4, we have 200, by $4.
$4.
July 1st.
July 1st.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
They wanted eight.
And what they're, and what's going along with this is, so we have 250 beds there, so $4 a day times the 250, times 365 is $365,000 a year that's going to increase what we have to pay to regional jail. And that's one, we do have an issue with that, you know, a lot of us that are on that board are having issues with their budget and how they're doing their budget, and it's like, it appears to a lot of us that they don't have a concern for the budget because they feel like all they got to do at the end of the year is up it for next year and pass the burden on to the multiple jurisdictions that participate with regional jail. We're having further discussion on that.
Would you like to take a strong message back from the council?
We have a strong one, but there is something else that I have mentioned. There's, well, there's another thing that I have been made aware, brought up in the past, is something that we need to look at as our city. The state, if we have state inmates from our city that are in that facility, basically the state gives a per diem back, it's almost like a rebate to who's housing these people. And I don't have to research yet, but my understanding was, at some time years ago, it was a vote by council to give them that per diem. My understanding is the way the code is written, that per diem is supposed to go back to the locality. Regional jail is not a locality. So that's something we need to address because it depends on whether misdemeanor felony, there's different things that come into play, but it could be anywhere from $4 to $12 a day. It's either 4, 8, or 12. So on average, you know, if it's $8 a day, and majority of these 250 inmates, so it's like buying a car with a rebate and letting the dealer keep the rebate. So that's something we need to look at, so that's something we need to address to protect ourselves, even though we're part of the group. Another thing, Martin A. Thomas was voted to be the new chairman of the board, so he will start at the next meeting. There was a need for closed session in reference to personnel and potential litigation. Based on the closed session, it has been decided there's going to be a special meeting. It's been called for Wednesday, March the 21st, at 1:30 in the afternoon.
Solomon, based on that letter from the inmates, you told me that you're checking to make sure that we don't have any latent liability. Would you like to?
That's, that's correct. We looked into the matter just to make certain mayor, vice mayor, members of council, previous to this particular issue, I had had a conversation with Norfolk City Attorney about liability issues. As many of you know, sometimes when someone sues a prisoner or inmate at the regional jail, sues, they will sue whatever council members on the board also. And so we've had prior discussions about liability insurance on the regional jail part of it. The issue with regard to this current request for an investigation or appeal for assistance, the inmates seem to be of the belief that the mayor was in charge of that particular jail. I think the legal structure is such that... I think the legal structure is such that those authorities and the jails stand separate and apart from the city and so, we'll continue to keep an eye on that issue, but I don't think that's a matter for the mayor or the city council as it relates to the regional jail. If anything comes up different, I will certainly let you all know and we are in discussions with regional jail council, as well as the other city councils, to make sure there's a distinction between the parties.
Right.
Question on that increase in the per diem. Is it anything in the latest agreement that governs the percentage of increase annually?
No, it's nothing, we have no agreement as it relates to the percentage of increase. What, what Mr. Clark has called to our attention and we're looking at is what did the city do years ago in the per diem that we gather that some cities are getting their per diems and whatever it is, we will research and bring it before council so that can be reversed so the city can get the per diems that they used to get. I remember we used to get per diems. So we're researching that to find out what happened and why.
Okay.
But no, as Mr. Clark said, it seems to be a very small group. We did request them to allow some of our five cities CFOs to meet with their budget team, but they started at, it was gonna be $8 and, you know, our hair caught on fire and then we kept talking and they got, they just came up with a number.
What's driving the increase?
Medical.
Medical.
Medical, medical, medical.
It's medical and a lot of the, you know, cost with, there's several cancer patients there, cost with some HIV patients there, and there's some issues that we're looking into as well, that they might not be utilizing Medicare and Medicaid as they should.
They are not using it.
That's something that needs to be addressed because, just because the person is in that facility, doesn't mean they don't receive those benefits. But if they're not, you know, billing through the benefits, the cost is just gonna fall back on the participating localities.
Do you think the mindset that you indicated about they have a blank check can be changed?
Yes, and I can't discuss it because it was part of our closed session, but it is being addressed.
Sounds like you're on top of it.
Thank you.
Looks like legal expense is gonna become a major factor too.
At some point.
More than you know.
Yeah. Any other questions for Nate?
Yeah, well, Thomas, that'd be the board chair, what look how it is?
Norfolk, City Council Norfolk.
Got one question, reference parking. I've noticed the surface parking lot on County Street is hardly being utilized and that may be a PRHA-owned property.
The one behind Gwad's?
Yeah.
Well, we have discussed that and I know there has been an offer put out trying to lure some of the employees that work in the downtown businesses to park there to reduce rate, to keep them out of the two-hour parking, to have the turnover for customers to come. So that is a city lot, but that has been addressed.
Is being addressed.
Well, still working on it, but that's, that's one of the...
Have they already put notice out to the businesses?
I don't, I don't know if...
Dr. Patton?
Mr. Wright, can you speak to that, please?
Good evening, yes. We have put one notice out. It was not, we didn't get a lot of feedback and so, we're just gonna have to go back and try, try different, different methods to put that information out.
Okay. Cause that's definitely underutilized at really any hour of the day.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
While you're standing, I commend everybody that's had a hand to get this active again.
Good.
Cause this is the first report we've had in a long time.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Jill, do you have a report?
That personal committee did a meeting.
Anything?
No.
Yeah. Planning District adopted a resolution to oppose offshore drilling and I sent you a email from Senator Kane's office asking us to consider that and I sent that to you all. I've heard from some of you that said yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Is it agreeable that we ask the city manager to go ahead?
Do the resolution and bring it forward. We'll bring it forward next meeting.
All right.
We got the template.
Well, let's go to the assessors' report.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Simmons, members of council. Pleased to be here tonight to provide you with the results of my annual reassessment of the real property in the city of Portsmouth. My report tonight will focus on the methods used, market conditions in Portsmouth, and will reveal the proposed assessments for fiscal year 2019. I wanna start with some thank yous. It was very important to me to do this at the front of the, of the presentation. First to my staff, we have a real team of professionals, dedicated professionals that go above and beyond every day to get the job done, not only for me, for our department, but most importantly, for the city of Portsmouth and the citizens. Dr. Patton, Mr. Ashby, and Ms. White, it's a pleasure to work with you and your respective staffs and I appreciate all the support you lend. Whether it's the planning department, finance, the city engineer, the building official, the EDA, IT, or public utilities, I can't say enough about the cooperation and camaraderie that we have and the valuable assistance they provide to the day-to-day functions of my office. The same can be said for our, can be said for our elected officials, Frankie Edmondson, Paige Cherry, and Cynthia Morrison. The support and help they and their staffs provide go beyond any thanks that I could ever give. Cliff Sales, Donna Morrow from IT, Cliff from GIS, and Earl Cheatham, the city surveyor, these are three people I see in my office every day and who help, who really provide a lot of assistance and make my job doable. And of course, the city council for your leadership commitment and support. I thank you. Pursuant to Title 58.1 of the Code of Virginia, it's my duty to list and maintain on all real property within the city of Portsmouth and to ensure, and to ensure the burden of taxation shall rest equally upon all the city's property owners. State code requires assessments to be uniform on the same class of property within geographic boundaries. State code also requires that assessors strive for 100% of fair market value. As I said, our standard is 100% of fair market value. So what exactly is fair market value? There are several standard definitions out there, but one that has survived the test of the courts and the test of time in Virginia was fashioned in the 1958 Virginia Supreme Court case of Tuckahoe Women's Club versus the city of Richmond and reads as follows: "Fair market value is the price a property will bring when it's offered for sale by one who desires but is not obliged to sell it and bought by one who has other no necessity of having it." The mission of the office of the city assessor is to appraise all real, real property throughout the city in a fair and equitable manner, as mandated by the Code of the State of Virginia, the Code of the City of Portsmouth, and the professional guidelines set forth by the International Association of Assessing Officers. Sorry. This mission will be carried out in a courteous, efficient, and professional manner by a well-trained staff of, dedicated to the service of the citizens of Portsmouth. Some of our day-to-day functions are to inspect and collect data on all new construction, review data on existing properties, perform statistical analyses, process property transfers, process parcel combinations and subdivisions, and provide assistance to the public. As we proceeded through our reassessment process this year, there were some major obstacles facing the real estate market in the city of Portsmouth and around the country. The major obstacle I see in the city of Portsmouth is its aging inventory. Quite simply, today's buyers want new or newer construction. This is clearly on display in Portsmouth with the infill development phenomenon. Infill development in large part is taking the place of the old house flipping days where investors buy, renovate, and resell blighted properties. The trend now is for these investors to buy, demolish, and rebuild. This is happening all over the city and no neighborhood is immune to it. While managing infill development is vitally important, you can look at the pace at which it's occurring and the pace at which these new homes are selling and it points directly to where the, the demand lies. We need to find ways to increase our new housing stock, be it through new subdivisions or well-managed, and I, and I repeat that, well-managed infill development. Changing consumer preferences can be seen all around us. I'm amazed every time I go in one of these new apartment home complexes like Sterling King or the Quarters or Harbor Vista, at the demographics of the people living there. They have a very broad range of tenants, from young and single, to married with children, to senior citizens. And the young and single you'd expect, but you don't just, you don't expect to see the other consumer sets in those, those types of apartments. Third thing is the millennial effect. While they represent a large segment of the potential real estate market, lenders have been tight with lending requirements to millennials due to, due primarily to student debt loads. And I'll, I'll bring this back up in just a minute. A shortage in supply of existing housing has remained an obstacle for a few years now. This is what I call the bubble hangover. We have many homeowners who are trapped underwater, can't afford to take the loss if they sold their homes. They're still out there, a lot of people don't think they are, but they are, and this has been going on now for, for eight or nine years. And of course, I certainly have to mention that 2017 was spent in a whirlwind of questions about what our national fiscal, fiscal policy would look like and how it will impact state and local governments. We may be facing these questions for quite some time. Positive signs in the market. During 2017 and moving into 2018, interest rates, while increasing some recently, still remain at very attractive levels for home buyers. National market indicators have been positive for more than a year. Lenders continue to loosen credit standards as we move further and further away from those infamous bubble days. And I'll bring up the millennial effect here again in this, as a positive sign. As the year progressed, millennials have benefited from some of loosening credit. Mortgage companies are reporting that millennials make up nearly 40% of buyers applying for mortgages and that number could increase to as high as 43% by the end of 2018. This is quite eye-opening and we need to be ready to capture as much of that market segment as we can. And again, that goes back to new inventory, cause that's what they're looking for. Total transfers last year increased for the third consecutive year and are up by nearly 1,000 transfers over the last five years. That's, that's very encouraging. Total foreclosures has decreased again and this year's decrease is one that I would consider significant. This is certainly an encouraging sign and we hope that this continues and I think it will through the next year. This chart shows foreclosures as a percentage of sales and as you can see, it's steadily declined for the last five years and again, good positive indicator for the market. The average days on the market for sold homes is steady, but it's decreased considerably since 2012. And going back to the aging inventory notion, the average days on the market for new homes in Portsmouth that sold is nearly 20 days less than, than the overall average. So again, we get back to that, we need new inventory here in Portsmouth. Average residential sales price has increased for the fourth straight year and again, this is attributable a lot to the infill development that's going on. The next few slides, I'll just kinda flip through...
Can you put that last slide up again?
Pardon?
Can you put the last slide?
Sure. The next few slides show each neighborhood and the percentage of decrease or, or increase or decrease for, for this reassessment. And I'll just flip through these, they're in your, in your packet and get to the, the So we have a total of 32,017 taxable residential parcels in 160, 186 assessing neighborhoods in Portsmouth. Likewise, we have 2,442 taxable commercial parcels in seven assessing neighborhoods. 19% of residential neighborhoods decreased in value, 21% of residential neighborhoods increased in value, 60% of residential neighborhoods had no change. Residential properties increased overall by half a percent and commercial property values increased by nearly 18%. So as you can see here, our total percentage increase as a result of this reassessment is 5.47%. The total value increase is $392.4 million, which will impact revenue by just over $5.1 million.
How's that compare with last year?
Last year, I believe we were up about 0.2%.
In the total percentage of increase?
Total percentage, yes, sir. Assessments for railroads, pipelines, and utility companies are determined by the SCC and those values typically aren't available until September. These properties are taxable at same rate as other real property in the city. The current SCC property values are roughly 127.2 million and the total levies are 1.65 The Disabled Veterans Program, Tax Relief Program has grown to over 280 recipients totaling $56.9 million in abated value or just over 740,000 in annual exonerations. This is up from last year by nearly 60 additional recipients, nearly 12 million in assessed value and 154,000 in exonerations. The Senior Citizen Tax Relief Program administered by the Social Services Department encompasses 935 parcels with a total assessed value of 128.9 million. The total exonerated taxes from this program is 1.4 million. That is down just over 5% from last year. Likewise, the Senior Citizen Tax Freeze Program, also administered by Social Services Likewise, the Senior Citizen Tax Freeze Program, also administered by Social Services, encompasses 267 parcels with a total assessed value of $42.7 million and carries a total of $74,600 in exonerated taxes. That number is down 14% from the previous year.
So we abate, fact mainly taxes, a point that's equivalent to about four cents on our tax rate.
Yes, yes.
That's pretty profound.
That is, mhm, that is.
Since you mentioned abatement, I mean, I know that developers are looking for new development, but what are the benefits or the disadvantages to a developer coming in and taking a property that is already old or scheduled for demolition, getting an abatement versus us demolition and then them getting a brand-new dry, clean slate of land?
So are you saying like the rehab program?
Yeah, or like our Mary Jane Bakery, we're going to demolition that.
We are going to do that.
We're going to take that down, but what if a developer wanted to come in and they were eligible for some abatement tax?
That would be.
Or taking the property like it is and then they do their own demolition on it.
Historic tax practice.
Yeah, there's, there's that, and then within the city, the rehab program would allow for a developer to come in and either redo that property or tear it down and get a tax credit based on, you know, what they, what they would rebuild.
Tax consultant.
Yeah.
Good question.
So, and the rehab program is very successful. We have a lot of participants in that and it's, it's generated a lot of development around the city. This chart shows a total value of taxable versus non-taxable real property in the city of Portsmouth based on current assessed values. And here you can see the breakdown of non-taxable property values by type. Please note the local government includes city-owned properties, school properties, EDA, PRHA, and others.
A percentage of 56% seems higher than previous years.
I think it depends on what, what the question is. So is the question non-taxable area or non-taxable value? There's different ways of looking at it. This, this chart is.
Value.
Based on value.
Based on value.
Dollar value.
Yes.
That's what drives our budget. Yes.
Yep.
The regional government on this slide, it's the jail and what else?
There's HRSD and then I included, there's some city of Chesapeake, some city of Norfolk in there, you know, I assume they're, I'm not sure what they are, but. The next steps. Assessment notices are being printed as we speak and will be mailed by March 1st to all the property owners in the city. Appeal hearings will begin on March 15th and run through the 30th of March. These are the informal hearings where property owners can sit down with an appraiser and discuss their concerns. And after that, in the month of May, we hope to have our BOE hearings concluded before the end of that month. During the next few months, staff will continue to process new construction and property alterations so that we can capture that growth for the fourth quarter. And the land book will be printed and effective by July 1st. Also, and this is very important to me, the Vision Kama system will be live on July 1st, and I say it will be live, it will be live on July 1st.
They've been working.
We've made major strides in the last six months toward getting this project over the finish line.
Will it, will it need an update?
No, no, it's going to be ready.
Five years?
They've promised us the, we've gotten every update that they've put out.
It will be current.
And Mr. Jones is working closely.
Yes, absolutely current, yes. This, getting this live will entail enormous amount of work this spring from both my staff, the IT department, and Vision staff, but we're prepared to meet the challenge. I will not let this very important project flounder any longer. It's the highest priority for me right now. It's very important that we get this done.
Again, because we are being televised, would you state when the Board of Equalization will start hearing appeals?
They haven't scheduled their meetings yet, but the Board of Equalization will meet, will meet very soon to schedule their hearings, and they will be sometime in May. We will advertise that.
Any questions? We do have a need for a closed session. Is there a motion?
I'm not done.
You're not done?
I've got some more stuff here.
He's got one more than me, I guess.
Two more slides. So in paraphrasing our mission statement, "We strive to provide the highest degree of service to the citizens of Portsmouth while appraising all real property in a fair and equitable manner." With that in mind, I have carefully reviewed our business rules with an eye towards becoming more efficient. I've reflected on our departmental goals to ensure they are aligned with the overall goals of the city and its leaders. I've refocused my attention and my staff's attention on developing new and innovative solutions to our everyday work to ensure a product of the highest quality, all of which has led to restored energy and attention to the city assessor's role as it pertains to city council's guiding principles. And one more thing, I sort of felt I'd be remiss if I didn't discuss the idea of the four big things. Not necessarily the things themselves, but the idea of them and the dedication to seeing these things come to fruition. The success of this idea will have a profound impact on the real estate market in Portsmouth as we build on the commitment to quality education and strive to boost the city's image around the state and the region. But I know as I stand here tonight, I'm preaching to the choir, but I think we should all applaud this council for writing the song that we need to sing to the congregation. So with that, I thank you and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Butts, for that excellent presentation. I just wanted to, and he hit it, he hit upon it, but I'm going to reiterate it, that as a quick reminder, staff will now need to work to calculate the revenue estimates for the upcoming year for consideration of the various tax reductions, as he shared, that are required for relief programs such as the housing rehab credits, the tax relief for the elderly and disabled, the federal mandate for the disabled veterans program, state and federal, and other tax incentives property held in the city. And additionally, we need, we will need to adjust for the percentage of uncollectible taxes that we experience annually. And all of this will be provided in conjunction with the annual budget presentation which I will make on March 26 at 4:00 p.m. Thank you.
Mayor, just to tag along with what the city manager said, certainly as we have looked at things and as the budget goes forward, we'll also be making some consideration of those issues as we have challenges for all of our taxation. As you all know, my office has worked both with the treasurer who's here tonight as well as others to make sure that we can collect as much as possible, but that always is an issue when we translate the assessment to an actual budget dollar amount.
And before we consider the motion to go into closed session, I'd like to recognize our city treasurer.
And his team.
Paige Cherry, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Your staff too.
Thank you.
All right, with that, is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A7 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation. For such consultation, an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city, specifically regarding Virginia International Gateway Incorporated versus the city of Portsmouth, Virginia, Portsmouth Circuit Court, case CL16001427-00, and Virginia International Gateway Incorporated versus the city of Portsmouth, Virginia, Portsmouth Circuit Court, case CL15002813-00, and pursuant to Virginia Code, section 2.2-3711A3 for the purpose of discussing the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically regarding Craney Allen.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been duly made and seconded a discussion. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?